Good evening. Today is March 7, 2023. It is 6:32 PM. Hi. Good evening. Welcome to the March 7, 2023 Meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This open meeting is being conducted. Well, we don't need to do that part because we're in live, live in person. Information on how to join our school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Before I take our first item, which is community comments, do we have anyone here who would like to make a community comment? Hi.
Hi.
Just at the end, we do have like the sign up sheet. I think we forgot to put it out. So just if you could just make a note after, just so that we have it for the record. Great. So I'm gonna do the community comment statement then. All right. Thank you. Community comments are an opportunity for our members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. For community comments, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. When you speak, begin by stating your name and whether you live in Dover, Sherburne, or Boston, or a faculty member. Community comments are an opportunity for our school committee to listen to members of the community, but not a forum for answering questions or engaging in the debate. Once the public comment section of this meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three school districts. One caveat to that, if you are here to make a statement or ask a question during the public comment portion of these budget hearing, you are welcome to wait until then and we will open that back up for community comments again. In the meantime, hello.
Hi. My name is Iris Margariti. I am a parent of three boys, born and raised in Dover. Two are currently attending Chikering Elementary School, and the third is about to enter Chikering Preschool. I am here today to be a voice for our children, who deserve to recover the massive learning loss from COVID, so that they may excel academically and be able to think critically for many years to come. My own experience with learning loss is unique and relevant, and I would like to share it with you. I was born and raised in Albania. My parents raised me to the age of 18. I was very fortunate to win a lottery for U.S. citizenship. I came here by myself. I put myself through college, and I graduated from the Mass College of Pharmacy, Boston, with a doctorate of pharmacy degree. I have lived in circumstances a lot like what we experienced during the pandemic. When I was in sixth grade in Albania, my middle school closed for over six months due to the civil war that was going on at that time. Just like during COVID, teachers started to have math classes over the Albanian public television. Those were not effective for some students, since very few had electricity on during the time that the class was showing. I was not one of the lucky ones. It is very hard to follow math lesson when missing several of the previous lessons. Despite what was going on around me at the time, such as the fall of communism, tanks in the street, we managed to catch up and succeeded in school. In fact, we became more resilient and innovators. We had to work very hard and at a fast pace to catch up on math, science, languages, and many children worked together to seek additional book to supplement our knowledge. We did not want to fall behind our older peers. We wanted to be as good, if not better, at the subjects than they were. Our parents did not accept our academic loss as a casualty of war. They pushed us to work hard, to focus on learning, and they made their own sacrifices so that we would recover lost knowledge. Children in Dover have not recovered from the pandemic. I talk with many parents whose children are in Russian math or have outside tutoring, but many parents in this community cannot take time from work to help at home, as many families must have two-parent working household to afford the home prices and high taxes. Our children deserve to regain the knowledge and to focus on learning and academics that their pre-pandemic peers had. In fact, given what they have been through, they deserve even more. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there other community comments? Okay. Do we have anybody on the Zoom who wants to make a community comment?
We have one member, but they're muted and they're not changing, so.
Okay. All right. With that, we will close this portion of our meeting and move on to our next order of business. There is an addition and kind of a little bit of tweak if you're following along in the agenda. First, a typo. We are reviewing the fiscal '24 budget tonight, not the fiscal '23 budget. Please forgive our typo. And second, before we get to a discussion and vote to certify the fiscal year '24 operating budget, Ms. Fattori has some updates for us and is going to present what we're describing as a version two. We've had some changes to the financial model since the last time that we met.
Thank you, Maggie. So in your packet, I provided you with some updated documents for '24, our typical flow through where we take our starting point from version 1.0 and then run through some adjustments. So keep in mind that with the governor's changing hands, the budget process was delayed from the state side, and we actually had some open items on our, on our own that precluded us from being able to do this in February, and that being the West Suburban Health Group Board meeting didn't take place until last Thursday. So tonight, we're bringing forward these adjustments that have already been incorporated into the budget presentation, but I want to be able to share that information with the committee before we look at the total budget. So on the revenue side, and remember, we show this in this format this way because it is, it reduces the town assessments because it's additional revenues that we are bringing into our budget that then lowers what needs to be spread to the districts. We are using the governor's budget for Chapter 70, so we're picking up a little under $140,000 more. You know, it might be a little aggressive to take, in this particular situation, to take the whole thing off the cherry sheet at this point for the governor's budget, because remember, it still has to go through the House, the Senate, before it gets to the final, and we have a new governor, so I'm sure there was some excitement. But I think in the spirit of trying to make our budget as reasonable as we can for the towns, we actually are going to take the whole $136,982, an increase your Chapter 70 revenues by that. The Chapter 71, which is your regional transportation, we're only seeing a small bump over what we had been carrying. The word on the analysis of the budget is that the regional transportation is budgeted to be a 90% reimbursement. I think if that actually plays out, we'll, we'll definitely see more Chapter 71 reimbursement based on what I know our actuals are. But again, there, sometimes the cherry sheets, as I've learned from a research analyst at Morris who does, gives us fabulous information, there's sometimes a little bit of a lag as to what year's transportation they're picking up when they do the cherry sheet. So I'm thinking that might come into play, but that would then offset if we're being aggressive with Chapter 70. So we're picking up a little bit more than that. We're continuing to see very favorable interest rates on our interest income, so we're going to increase that by 20,000. You know, when we look at our operating statement for fiscal year '23, you can see I also increased our projections for interest income up to like 80,000. So that's been very promising in that respect, and that's almost like unfound money in a way. So I'm increasing the fiscal year '24 number from 20,000 to 40,000, so that's 20,000. And then, as you know, and this will make more sense too when we look at your monthly statement, any revenues, surpluses from our main categories that we experienced in '23, in a current year, that had we known we were going to have those monies would have reduced the assessment, we do bring those forward and use E and D. So we have $160,000 of E and D, which is made up of about 80,000 from additional transportation and 80,000 from interest income. And so those are your adjustments to the revenue side of about $330,000. Any questions on the revenue pieces? Okay. On the expenditure side, you know, we've been talking a lot about the human resources project that we've been going on consultation. Beth will talk about that a little bit later in her presentation. We don't have the final sort of report yet, so what we're doing is we're putting a placeholder of money in the budget. So we are putting $50,000 in. Whatever comes of the recommendations, we will supplement that with ESAR money to get us through the first year, and also figure out how that's going to impact the two local districts. So that is a starting point that we have a base in the budget, and once we have the report, that'll give us enough latitude that we need to be able to implement the recommendations. So we are picking up $50,000 for that new position. On the flip side, we are recognizing salary reductions from retirements and staffing changes that we already know about. So that's a reduction in your budget of about 185,000. Keep in mind, you already saw some reductions in salaries from post-'23 salary adjustments, so we've got a nice reduction in our budget in totality from salary savings from changes in positions. If you recall, in your January meeting, I'm going to say, you approved some additional positions and increased ratios for Appendix C. The net increase in that is $12,469, and the rates were approved on March 2 for the health insurance. It did go up to 10%. Your budget was carrying 8%. We only saw a $30,000 increase, however, because when I took the current census as of February, we did have some changes in number of people and flips between family and individual, so we were able to make up some of that increase that we would have needed to make up the 2% increase by changes in our cohort. And so that was a nice little surprise that we only had to pick up 30,000, because I was, I was estimating it would be 50. So with all, total of all those, we're actually seeing a reduction in your expenditure side of just under $93,000. Therefore, it's going to bring our total increase from a 3.85 down to 3.51. So if you go and look at your detailed budget from the December and incorporate all this, that will get you to your 27,972,540. Any questions on any of those or any other questions that you're anticipating we bring forward?
Okay. Thank you for the update. It's hard to, it's really a situation where you are building a plane and flying it at the same time.
It's been one of those years.
Yes. They're bringing you the parts in the air.
Yeah.
All right. So we are going to move on to what was item three on our agenda, which is our discussion of the FY '24 operating budget. That will be followed by a vote that we will take to certify the budget. Before we begin, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent McCoy to start our presentation. I just want to say a huge thank you to the whole school and district administrative team for putting together this budget with such care. And for, you know, it's tricky in a time of transition. We know that obviously this is your first time, you know, driving the whole budget process yourself in a regional district along with two other budgets. It's not a small ask, and I think, you know, we are sensitive to the constraints of our two districts and wanting to put together a budget that both meets the needs of all of our students. And to the point of the community comments earlier this evening, you know, we are aware that, that students still have big needs, both academics, many students' emotional needs. Kids are not all right in many situations coming out of the pandemic, and so we appreciate the building of a budget that recognizes that and that provides the supports that students need in order to make up for lost ground, in order to thrive both academically, emotionally, and in order to have successful careers and so that we can support them. We appreciate very much the attention to the ongoing strategic plan that we're kind of wrapping up from Andrew, as well as the formation through your entry plan of a new strategic plan. And like from my observation, this budget very tightly connects with those goals, and we're really appreciative of many hours of all the people at this table and outside of it, as well as the school building administrators. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to hearing.
The hearing. Great. Thank you for your continued support. I will say that I have gotten to witness the budget process for five years prior in the Assistant Superintendent seat, but being able to work up in close and personal with Dawn Fattori, what a blessing she is to this district and a great partner in this work. So thank you, Dawn, for all of your support. And as you mentioned, Maggie, our strategic plan, we're continuing to work off of the former strategic plan, the goals being around innovative teaching and learning and making sure that we're preparing our students for all of the challenges they'll, they'll face in the future, that we are working on supporting the health and wellbeing of all of our students, especially coming out of the pandemic, that we're developing partnerships with families in the community to take advantage of all of the resources that our community and family brings to the table, because we certainly can't do this work alone, and it's enriched by all of the volunteer work and expertise that our families donate. Safe and innovative facilities, as you know, we've done a lot of work around safety. We'll continue to do that, as well as look at spaces like this to make sure that they are optimal for 21st century learning moving forward. And of course, resource efficiency, which is always one of Dawn's priorities, but especially, as I mentioned later, through the special education audit, making sure that we're utilizing our staff and our programming to meet the needs of all of our students within the buildings. The budget was built upon the idea that we would continue regular school operations with level enrollment moving forward, that we would hopefully not have to cut back any services or programming, that we would continue on with what we've been offering this year, of course, keeping in mind the guidance from our two towns, the warrant and the advisory committees, and trying to be respectful, of course, of their restraints and the needs of other departments within the towns. And, you know, as mentioned, we're going to continue to assess the needs of our students academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, coming out of the pandemic. On Thursday and Tuesday at our local meetings, Denny will be talking about the math curriculum that we're looking at in both elementary schools moving forward, so we're going to continue to see where our students are and how we can move them forward, certainly academically, but in terms of all of their needs, using both our regular operating budget to do that and any leftover ESAR funds that were provided during the pandemic. So without further ado, that's kind of the framework, and.
Sure.
Dawn will take it away. Thank you.
So we'll talk a little bit about the budget drivers, and then we'll get into a little more detail, but obviously, the largest part of your budget is payroll and the related benefits, approximately 80%. It's actually 84% this year, all in. Keep in mind that in your budget is a reserve for contractual increases for all of our bargaining units, which we have, three of the five are actually underway, and two are scheduled to begin before the end of the month. It also includes salaries increases for all the individual contract contractual people that we have, central office, IT, et cetera. That includes also the step and lane increases for the educators, and remember that the step increases for our educators range from 4 to 9.8%. So not only are you picking up COLA for that population, but also their matrix steps and any lane changes. So that is built into the reserve that during the preliminary budget was in the operating expense line and for purposes of presentations going forward, we've moved that up to salary. So if you're looking at your version one and version two, it looks a little different because we took the reserve and put it in salaries, because it now going forward is sort of where it will sit, and it helps the towns present the budgets a little, a little more transparent as well. So when we looked at the new budget in December, we brought forward two new staffing positions. The first staffing position was a literacy specialist here in the middle school that we've actually, this will be the third year next year. We've been carrying it through grant funding for the last two years, so that has been added to the budget, along with the athletic trainer that we've also added to the budget. Keep in mind, that was a post, but that's already in your budget now, and so we are actually formally bringing it fully into the budget, because it was partially funded by your athletic revolving fund this particular year. So we're making it 100% funded through the general fund, and I'll mention how that sort of impacted the operating versus salaries when we look at the overview. Tonight, we talked about the salary savings from retirement and staffing changes. That was the biggest piece that you saw tonight, but keep in mind, as I pointed out, if you go through the detailed pages that we presented to you, you'll see a lot of red, and that's where we had minor staffing changes from budget 23 to actual 23. So we did see quite a bit of savings in salary altogether when you look at the, the composition of all the savings. We also just talked about the increase in the healthcare cost being 10%. The good news is we still have over 40% participation in the high deductible plans. Keep in mind that last year was the transition from Fallon to Blue Cross. So with that, the West Suburban Health Group Board sort of was using a little bit of fund balance to supplement the rate increases to sort of protect those, those subscribers who were moving from Fallon to Blue Cross or one of our other plans. So we had very low increases last year. We had 3.5% increase last year on all our plans that only, that, there was a little bit higher increase if you're moving from Fallon to Blue Cross, but to sort of make that less of a jump, that's what we did. So if you look at it sort of averaging the two, 10% and 3.5 were probably more in the average. There have been, however, I'll just share with you, a huge increase in claims coming through, claims experience. We are thinking that's probably post-COVID activity, but to be conservative and to make sure that West Suburban still maintains the fund balance if they should, a 10% rate was agreed upon. If we wanted to fully fund everything, just to put it in perspective, we would have been looking for a 12.3% increase, so we did still use a little bit of fund balance to maintain the 10%, and we are closely monitoring the board to make sure that we keep it a healthy, viable purchasing group. But the 10% was well received by any of the municipalities sitting around the table, but it was something that they felt necessarily had to do. So to that point, I will say that there is still a huge savings between a benchmark and the high deductible plan. So I think we're going to do a more robust employee benefit fair this year. We're looking to, not to segue too much, but we're looking to better our life insurance package. We've already done the dental two years ago, and we want to re-educate employees again about the choices between high deductible and benchmark, to give them that opportunity. Using the 10% increase sort of gives us a door open to, you know, learn more about it, because 3.5 wasn't enough to like make people necessarily look at that, but just to educate people on how those work and why it might be beneficial for them to switch to it.
Their share is also going up 10%, correct?
Yes. They're 30, 10% of their 30% rate. Yes, exactly. So where sometimes you need a little catalyst to get you going, so that might be a way that we'll look at it, but we're looking to better educate our employees as to what their options are. We are also continuing to fund for our OPEB liability trust, which is pretty exciting. Again, I have an update for you in your fiscal year '23 monthly report in that we're now seeing the, for these last, for these next six months, January through June, the full impact of the 50/50 cost share, and we were able to actually increase our contribution, because I went back and recalculated everything, up to 200,000 for fiscal year '23, which that should be our base going forward for fiscal years in the, in the future. So that was great news, and I think our minimum funding policy was at least 100, and, but now I think we'll be able to hopefully maintain 200,000 in a given year. So you'll learn more about where we stand with that when the audited financial statements are presented. Obviously, another piece of the benefits that we do sort of see an increase, a larger increase than just 1 or 2% is the Norfolk County Retirement Assessment, and that did go up 7%. So all of those factors together, adding staff, salary savings, changes in benefits, sort of it are what sort of drive your payroll and related benefits, which represents over 80% of your budget, so that's key. As you know, we continue to do trend budgeting on all of our other operating accounts. I think one place that we're very good about doing is where we do one times, and so when we talk about the total, I'll show you, like in the one times, we actually removed the large cost for replacing all the MacBooks in the computer lab at the high school. We removed the cost of the website upgrade and the financial system upgrade. And so we do our very, what do I say, we're responsible to pull out those one-time costs so they don't stay in your base. And that's, again, the trend budgeting on top of pulling that out, but also looking at where we're not spending money and seeing if we can reduce there. So I do think you're going to see that we're still continuing to, even though the cost of everything is going up, not to let that portion of the budget continue to grow. And obviously, we're all here for the students, and so that can have an impact, not a huge impact as much as it can at the elementaries because of the nature of how middle school and high school work, but this budget was built on a projected enrollment of 1,130. We'll see how that goes. And that, the biggest piece of that, though, is reflects the, how the assessments are spread. So I think that's a budget driver on the town side, not necessarily operating side, but to see how, what portion of the assessment percentage is, is applied to Dover and Sherburne. This particular year saw a swing of an increase in both operating and the capital for Sherburne. And we'll talk a little bit about, too, when we look at the assessments, the other piece is the state calculated minimum, minimum local contribution. So we, you'll see, you'll wonder why Dover has like no increase in their assessment and Sherburne has a large one. You add all those factors together, that they have the enrollment swing, the cost of the per pupil foundation rate went up, they can afford to pay, so all in all, you'll see that they had a pretty large increase in their minimum local contribution. So all in all, our overall operating budget increase is just a little under $1 million, 3.51%, which is the number we just discussed, just comparatively for fiscal year '23. We saw a 2.4% increase of about $645,000. Here's where I was talking about the assessment. So with the new numbers that we had with the Chapter 70, the minimum local contribution, Dover's assessment's actually decreasing by about $4,400, and Sherburne's assessment's increasing by $715,000. That's only about, for Sherburne, that's about a $40,000 swing from the previous version 1.0. So unfortunately, they're not seeing a reduction because of the reductions that we're bringing forward, but luckily, it wasn't as large of an increase as it potentially could have been because we had some budgetary offsets. So here is your five-year look in your version 2.0 of your assessments, and I'll just note that assessments cover about 80, pay for 86% of our budget. The state pays for 11, about 11.6%, and then all that other stuff adds up to like 2.4. I'll just point out that the middle school and high school activity fees, we did reduce to better reflect participation. We'll continue to monitor that, but it didn't make sense to, as you can see, our numbers to continue carrying those numbers when we knew we weren't going to be able to probably meet them, so we did reduce those, and hopefully, we'll be able to obtain those new numbers in our participation rates. You'll also see where we talked about bank interest now is up to 40,000, so that's where we increased the 20,000 over what we are carrying, and you'll now see the 160,000 of E and D. That's sitting there, which is 50,000 more than last year, but that just shows you, that allows you to, to see historically what we've used for E and D. So on the operating side, cost side, again, we talked about most of these in our, in our budget drivers. Salary and benefits is about 84%. I wanted to highlight that when we move the reserve out of other expenditures, you now are going to see that that was a reduction in that line item category, and that's made up of the things that I just previously talked about with the MacBooks coming out, the website and new financial system coming out, and the movement too of, keep in mind, when I told you about the athletic trainer, we already had like money in the operating side to pay for the contracted services, so now with that position going into payroll, we took that base money that we had in operating and moved it up to salaries. So you weren't fully, you know, you were picking up some of that, but that's why you see a reduction. We got, we had so many reductions, but even though we had to increase some of the expenditure line items, we're still net down by almost 60,000. Transportation, as you approved at your, one of your meetings, like in January meeting, the 50, that's the fourth year of the contract, so remember the fourth and fifth year, it's sort of like our, our bonus year, so very little increase on that. And buildings and grounds, the largest piece of the increase of the 26,800 was in electricity. As we all know, rates are, are going up. We were able to lock in, but we are seeing a 40% increase based on the contract price we have now for supply and what we'll be paying next December. And as you know, deli- And as you know, delivery cost is something we don't have control of. And we'll have to see how that continues to play out. So and then remember your debt service, you have one more year after fiscal year 24. And then that whole line item will be gone. That will have paid off the middle school. But in totally, then you see your complete budget of 27 million. So we wanted to sort of, so you see the big pieces, we sort of wanted to put that into. So where, how is that money spent as far as in operations? So if you want to look at the overview of our educational services, which is direct student support, our staffing is approximately 16 and a half million dollars. We have 97.9 general education instruction staff. You have 50.6 in our special education services, which includes our GRIET program, our psychologists and our educational assistance support. Our guidance department is 14.6 FTEs, includes the adjustment counselors and our bridge program. And remember, the bridge program now includes the two FTEs, the counselor and the educator. And then our support services, including our librarians and nurses. And also in the 16.5, we've included the extracurricular sports and other activities, which are predominantly your appendix C stipends. On the expenditure side of our educational services, it's a little under a million dollars that we spend on our textbooks, curriculum, supplies, professional development, our technology needs, and then any expenses that we have for the extracurricular activities, which is primarily coming from the athletics. So in total, we have 17, approximately 17.5 million of our 27 million dollar budget is for direct student support. We have to support that, right? So our indirect support is basically from a staffing perspective is 2.4 million dollars. So that's everyone in central office, all the administrative assistants, all of IT, all of the business office. It includes your building-based staff. So your principals, assistant principals and their administrative assistants. And then our facilities and ground staff of 12.8 so that we can maintain the region's campus. On the expenditure side, obviously, we've got to maintain the buildings, right? So we've got the buildings and grounds operating and maintenance expenses, including utilities, transportation costs, and then there's some general non-instructional operating expenses like dues we pay, you know, audits, you guys audits and things that fall into this category. So that's approximately $5 million. So now you've got your 17.5 and your 5. And the other piece, and we've been talking a little bit more about this tonight, is just the benefit-related expenses. So healthcare-related expenses are our healthcare premiums. That's the piece I had to have 10% increase to it. Our OPEB, both the pay-as-you-go premiums for retirees plus your OPEB contribution. And then obviously, we pay the Medicare employer tax for current employees. So that totals about 3.7 million. And then you have your Norfolk County retirement contribution, which keep in mind is for your non-MTRS or your non-teachers. So MTRs at the state level takes care of that, but at the local level, you take care of Norfolk County. So that's 869,000 is our premium or is our payment that we have to pay into their fund for next year. We also cover our workers' compensation, which is employee-related, just under 100,000. And then our share of life insurance, which is for only like 1,400. That number will go up if we if we increase our package, but it's still minimal. So our benefit-related expenses is 4.6. So if you take those three pieces together, that's your 27 million dollars. So I think it helps to put in perspective what pieces of the budget go where, not just look at salaries and operating. So we thought it would be helpful to sort of see all the pieces put together. And I think it's impressive how much of our budget goes for direct student support. So the last piece of your budget is your capital request. And as you remember, at your meeting on February 15th, you approved the 1.2 million dollars to be funded for IMA to cover the high school rooftop air handler replacements. The IMA actually was reviewed by bond council today. We are presenting that to the Board of Selectmen in Dover and Sherburne next week. And then we'll bring it forward for signature. As you know, that's one of those agreements that has all school committee signatures on it. So we'll let you know when that's ready. The bond council did approve for us to have the payment date moved from July 15th to November 15th. So I think that will be well received by, I know at least Sherburne. So that was approved. And then the other remaining projects, the classroom floor replacement in the high school and the renovation of the two restrooms will be funded through E and D. I'm not bringing that approval forward to you tonight because I'm also hoping that in the next month or two, we'll know where we stand with the bleacher project. And I'll be able to then incorporate whatever funding we need to get that started into that vote. And so we're going to hold off. So we just do one vote. So that will be forthcoming.
And where are we with the rooftop air handler? We were looking at electrical versus gas.
So I think, yes, we actually got a quote for a complete electrification model. And so it is going to go back to our engineers to make sure that we have the infrastructure from the electrical standpoint. They think we do. But keep in mind too, and I can't remember, we had this discussion, we had the boilers out there too. So we're going to combine looking at going complete electrification for the boilers and the rooftop together to see where we stand. So we're sort of excited about that opportunity and appreciate the towns having that focus and sort of pushing us in that direction. So we got a good quote on actual models just to see what's out there. And they did tell us the lead time was 30 to 35 weeks. So we are moving that's, you know, we sort of knew that, but now we really know that. So we will get the report back from the engineers, be able to do the bidding process and get that rolling. So we figure by the time we have to put the down payment down, the town's money will be coming in. So it'll be perfect timing and then we'll just sit and wait for them to be delivered.
That's great. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Vettori, for taking a walk through our budget. Appreciate sort of that other way of breaking it down to look at it in the context of like what's getting direct, you know, just understanding where it's all going is really helpful. I think we look at it in spreadsheets every month and it's helpful to sort of think about it in different buckets. So appreciate it. Appreciate also the proportion of our money that goes directly to students. I think comparing us to a lot of our member districts, we operate very leanly. And I appreciate that people are willing to do that, that people don't work in silos, that, you know, I think about during the pandemic, people are out front swabbing noses. I mean, people around here just kind of do what needs to be done. And that's very appreciated. Also want to take a moment to thank the members of our community who invest in our schools. Thinking about all of the different organizations, the boosters, FOPA Positive, the high school PTO and many other corporate and also private donations that come in each year that help to provide some of the special programming and support, you know, some of our arts and our athletic programming that may not be able to happen without those parts of the budget. So great thanks to all those organizations. We appreciate it and obviously the students do too. So at this point, I wanted to open it up for questions from the school committee and then we'll open it up to community comments. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Questions or comments on the budget?
Yeah, well, you would start the community first.
Oh, community first.
Yeah, then you close the public hearing and then you guys have your discussion.
Okay, sorry, my bad. Are there members of the community who would like to ask questions or make comments about this budget presentation and our budget for the coming year? Yep. Hi, Jane.
You mentioned, John, that you had not applied a full chapter 71, the additional, full amount of the additional chapters. Did I understand that correctly?
No, we applied everything that the cherry sheet applies. But what I said is that the cherry sheet could be lagging a little bit in what data point they're bringing for our transportation. But we're going with what's in the cherry sheet.
For both 70 and 71?
Yes, for both 70 and 71. The difference can be that the information that's come out from analyzing it is that transportation is funded at 90%. If that's true, I think our chapter 71 will be a little higher. But you can't rely on that. So I'm sticking with the what the state's telling us is our chapter 71.
Yep.
Is there any way you guys can break it down more into the educational component, meaning the teachers versus the emotional component, the psychological component? These things that are separate from what the teachers are teaching in the classroom?
I'm, I, you know, I'll let Beth answer. I'm not totally sure in the context of you can break it down into like our guidance staff supports, obviously students' emotional growth, not educational growth, right? I think, yep, I think that when you talk about, you know, a teacher may in the course of their work with students, both support their, be there primarily to support, obviously, teaching and learning. And, you know, I think about, I mean, in a very sad experience, I think about the day that Sandy Hook happened. And that our teachers were willing to stop, you know, teaching math and say, hey, kids, like, this was really scary. We, you know, we care about you, that they're not just automaton. So we don't ask the teachers, say, on a daily basis to chart, like, what did I do? Did I ask a child how they were doing to keep metrics on that? And so there isn't an easy way for me to, or for any of us to say to the public, like, you know, on this one given day, the teacher spent 12 minutes checking in with students to see how they're doing. But, you know, I think in terms of guidance programming, you know, I think about, you know, some conversations that, you know, we need to have, you know, probably in the coming months about, you know, our health and wellness curriculum. Well, that's both academic and also social emotional. So, you know, how do you determine what is academic? It's part of this frameworks. It's part of what we're responsible for teaching. It also speaks to like the whole child. So there isn't an easy way to break that down. I think looking at this slide was an opportunity to sort of think about that, like, how much of it is going towards regular ed? Like, if you're a special educator, for example, if you are working with a student who has an emotional or a complex disability that includes emotional components, your job is to both help adapt and provide specialized instruction for the academics and also support all those emotional needs or social needs that the child might have. So, you know, it's not, there's no way to sort of separate those out in a, in the mathematical way, if that makes sense.
And if I may, I think too, because this is the middle school and high school level, it's a different, kind of a different gauging. For instance, like our bridge program.
Correct.
That is, that is strictly for emotional needs, children who've gone through a trauma. Because since we're the regional, we're not the Dover School Committee or the Sherburne School Committee, which deals specifically with the elementary schools.
So, yeah, so I don't know, like, if you're familiar with the bridge program? Okay, so the bridge program is a program that has been implemented in our schools because what used to happen.
Mostly the high school.
Yeah, mostly the high school. Like, say a student had to miss a lot of school, like, a couple of reasons. One could be for an emotional issue, but also it could be they broke their femur and were in a body cast and couldn't come to school and had home tutoring. But as we, you know, know, that's not the same. Now they come back to school and going to the entire day of school was too much. And so we used to have it where that made it impossible for kids to come to school. And so the idea of a bridge program is it's social, emotional and organizational support to say, you're back in school and we recognize that you need a slower on-ramp to get back into the whole day of school. And so we're going to provide some social, emotional support to help that happen so that you can be in the school and not continuing to be out of it. You know, another situation that might happen is a student needs to leave the school because they have, you know, you know, some kind of a crisis or a trauma that's caused them to need to go and maybe be in a hospital for a period of time. And they come back and we provide the supports. And our goal there is really to make sure that students are in school with their peers, learning, not losing, not having learning loss. And that we have some coordinated way to make sure, you know, for high school students in particular, they've come back and like they've got seven classes, you know, I think about a child, when my child was in school, she tore her shoulder. She was out of the school for like 10 weeks. And when she came back, she's like, holy cow, like, I have seven teachers and they're all trying to teach. And she just like shut down and that was too much. So there's an example of emotional support that isn't academic per se, but it makes it possible for students to access the academics. Does that?
It helps a lot. Okay. Is MTSS on there?
Um, so MTSS in and of itself is not a funded item. So like MTSS, multi-tiered support systems, is the structure that the state asks schools to use to support students. The idea being in a past life, you know, kids would just kind of poke along. And if they were, you know, really struggling, then they maybe would get evaluated for special ed. But by the time that that happens, it's so, it's been a year, it's been two years. They're way here where in fact, if we were keeping better track, doing more regular evaluations, doing more regular checking in, we might be able to say, I think about particularly in math, where skills really are sort of built on each other, we'd be able to say, you know what? Like, this kid didn't get, you know, you know, whatever we call it now, I'm sorry. Like division with regrouping, what are fractions, like something? Like, if we just spent like, you know, a short intensive time working with this kid and maybe the three other kids that really were stuck on that item, catching them up and getting them back into the mix, we don't have to do a thing where they missed one concept and then it's like two years later and in fact, they're way, way, way behind. And so the multi-tiered support systems really is one of, one of many educational acronyms that describes that process of making sure that you're checking in with every student on a regular basis to know if there's some place where they've got lost in their learning that we can remediate, catch them up in a quick, just-in-time way, without having to call it a special thing. I mean, there were days and I know you're new to Massachusetts, but there were times in our state where you had to be two years behind before the school could offer additional supports or help. Because the additional supports and help only came within the special education system. And in order to access that, you had to, your child had to be two years behind. You had to go through the whole battery of testing. You had to be diagnosed with a disability. And then, okay, now we can put services in place. That's such a wildly inefficient plan for what we would think good teaching could do anyway, which is just to put some extra help in place when it needs to be done so that we don't have a situation where kids are catching up. And I think about that in the context of the pandemic as well because, you know, we had the two, you know, whatever, year, year and a half, and in Dover and Sherburne, we're in a much different place than a lot of schools in the Commonwealth. Because we had our kids back in live learning, you know, by the fall of 2021. In many districts, that whole school year was lost to live learning. And, and, you know, I don't, I'm grateful that we were able to provide that to our students. Up here at the middle school and high school, it was more of a hybrid for longer than it was in the elementary schools. But different kids reacted differently to that. Some students really, I mean, we actually had some parents come and say, my child's thriving. My child doesn't like a crowd. My child loves this. But most kids weren't that engaged. It was really hard, you know? And as someone who was teaching during that time, you know, there you are and like there's your Zoom and like six of the students are like they're empty, there's just a chair and like, I'm here, I don't, help, hello? You know, it was really hard. And so we know that the majority of students didn't thrive in that environment. But that doesn't mean everybody needs the same thing in terms of remediation. And so when you look at it with an MTSS lens, what it means that we're doing the best that we can and really paying attention to taking dipsticks, taking assessments, checking, looking where there's holes, and then using the resources that we have, whether it's literacy specialists or whether it's times in a win block or what I need or an H block, that we can catch kids up. That's what that's all about. So that A, we provide for kids' academic needs in a meaningful way. And B, so that we're not letting problems continue on until they become, you know, you know, we say a special ed problem, but like to me, that's not a child with a disability. That's a child who just got so lost in the system that they weren't able to learn the things they need to learn to be successful. So that's what that is, if that makes sense. Okay. So it's not in here per se because it's not a thing. It's just that idea of being able to use, say, we have the literacy specialist and, you know, different folks who aren't necessarily part of the special ed program. Other times you have some capacity for those folks, like you might have a person who, you know, is a teaching assistant in the classroom, but in fact, the students that they're really there to work on are very independent that day. Okay, well, rather having that person sit in the corner, like, you know, as, you know, like a cheerful piece of, you know, decoration, we want those folks to have permission and to understand that they can, you know, if these two kids are having the problem today, they also can work with them. And so that's where MTSS comes into play. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm understanding that the teachers are doing it all the time.
Well, that's the goal. Yeah, that's what we want. And and part of that is professional development because especially in the middle school and the high school, like, what does a classroom look like that a like, what does a classroom look like that allows that to happen? That might be a little bit different than what I imagine. I think one of the community comments a few weeks ago was like, define what you mean by old school. And to me, what that meant, what I envisioned when that comment got made was, you've got 24 seats, you've got one teacher. The teacher keeps teaching, and what's happening with the students isn't really her concern. Test comes, these kids fail, good luck to you, these kids do great, we're really happy. And we just kind of proceed on like that. We are asking our teachers, check in more often, have opportunities for them to practice along the way so that we don't have a situation where all these kids over here are like getting Cs and Ds. Like, that's not okay for us. And part of their job is to create opportunities and lessons where there can be practice that relates to what the students need in that moment, if that makes sense. Not that we're like throwing out the whole baby with the bathwater of direct instruction. So, you know, not that we normally like to answer questions, but that kind of stuck in my mind. I think it's the idea that teachers that we expect today, we want them to be responsive to the students in front of them and not just like, this is what I teach these 185 days and good luck to all of you. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, other questions? Yes?
School safety, that's very important for me, I hope, for every, for the parent school. Is there any money reserved for enhancing or hardening the school safety?
So-
Maybe it's a one-time.
No, it's okay. We did some of that this year. Dawn, do you want to speak to that?
So, we, we have been performing, or having an outside group come in, actually, Synergy 911 and working with us. And typically, we're able to fund that through either, we have a, we carry a line item in our budget for professional development, which we can tap into. The superintendent has a reserve fund for special projects that come up that we tap into, but we've also been using some of our Title Grants, because safety and security of students and staff are one of the underlying goals of Title IV per se, so we actually use that money as well. So, we're able to, at any given year, pivot and not have to be a huge add to the general fund budget, but to use the funds that I have, we have access to, to fund that annual training.
And that's okay. And I know we've made some changes to our, our fiscal plan in the last, say, three or four years to improve safety.
Right, probably in the back five years. So, we did the access system, so that the FOB system that we have now at the complete campus was, has been in place for five years. We had a link with this year. We have done a lot of other security upgrades to the building. We don't say everything that we've done, but we've definitely, and we've been able to account for that in our normal operating budget, in our maintenance line item for buildings. So, if not, we bring forward to the school committee and they have used excess and deficiency funds to quickly approve something that we don't have to, to wait to do, so. And I think, actually, I will say, that was about $150,000 the year that we did some pretty major security upgrades here to the region's campus.
And then this year, a change that we made with relating to, relating to security is the addition of outdoor camera systems. They do have those at the elementary schools, and we have not historically had them here. Not really per se for budget issues, but there was a time, and, you know, I had an opportunity over the last month that we've been deciding this, to speak to some older school committee members. And, you know, there was really a feeling for a long time, I would say before school shootings became really a, a thing, that, um, they, that the, the school committees at the time, the leadership at the time, really didn't want, like, sort of a big brother feeling around here. They wanted, you know, to have a very, and I think unfortunately, those days have changed, and so our opinion on it as a school committee and with a different crop of people and with different life experiences has changed. So, that's something that's an ongoing project. Some of the hard, they call hardening of the campus, we can't talk about per se, because, you know, we're on TV and if I were a baddie, I'd want the blueprint, right? But I, I think that has been an important focus of our work. And, and what we were talking about with professional development is annual training that teachers and faculty get about responding to crises, about, you know, what is, what does research tell us is the best thing to do if, God forbid, something happens like that in our community? And just sort of annually helping folks to keep in the front of their minds, because, you know, unfortunately, something like that happens and you're going to operate on your instinct of what you have been trained to do. And we at the schools need to be the people providing the training so that folks have, you know, a toolbox of what to, what to respond with.
Roughly a year ago, we had a presentation at a joint school committee meeting by Synergy 911, which I'm happy to send you the link to, if you'd like to review that. And then, at the end of last year, we had a security kind of community forum around some of the cyber threats that were made at the middle school level. And one of the things that we heard from parents at both of those events was, you know, our kids know what to do in a fire drill, because we've been practicing those for years. Our kids, you know, when they come home from perhaps a lockdown drill, and you ask them, well, what do you do? They often say, well, we follow the adults. And then the question becomes, what if there isn't an adult to follow? So, we're going to be working with Synergy 911 to go to, kind of go to the next level of training in a developmentally appropriate way. Of course, you talk about that with a senior very differently than you talk about it with a fourth grader, to, to make sure the kids know what to do if there isn't an adult around, and they can unfortunately internalize some of these strategies if they're at the mall or if they're at church. So, we'll be having parent conversations, particularly at the elementary level first, before we do any of that with kids, because we want to make sure parents understand what the conversation looks like and that they're comfortable moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, the other question I had, the Congress has $300 million for the safety, so, security. Did we get any money?
I, I think typically that, the way that gets dispersed is through the states. And so, like, this Congress would pass the money, then the money would be allocated to the states. I, I'm not on top of exactly how much the Commonwealth got. And then the Commonwealth would decide how that gets distributed to individual communities. We haven't received word of specifics.
And that could have been a competitive grant process, probably for that money.
Yeah.
So, in a competitive grant process, obviously, we, we sort of rank low because of our ability to pay versus other school districts that might not be able to pay. So, we would typically not have a, a lot of luck with a competitive grant process from our perspective. They are allowing school districts to use the ESAR money, so the money that we got through the American Rescue Plan for safety, which is actually how we're paying for the cameras. So, a lot of schools are using some of that money for security and safety issues. Now, that will end next year, but that has been an access for schools to, uh, tap into for security issues too.
If it happens that money comes our way for this, we certainly will find ways to harden, you know, I hate the word harden your campus, but you understand what we're getting at, to provide more opportunities. You know, certainly, anytime we are afforded grants or we have the opportunity to get them and, and we know we will or we think we might qualify, we always apply for them. So, yeah, like coupon cutters over here. Other questions? Yep.
There has been a lot of talk about the audits. So, I saw that some part of the budget specifically, there was $5 million, in the $5 million part, they said that they're going to spend some of them on audits. What specific audits are coming in the next year and how much will those cost the taxpayers?
Audits?
Yes.
Are we, are you talking about a curriculum audit?
Yeah, I don't know which type. I just-
Oh, within the $5 million budget.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm sorry, that's the regions. We have to have a financial audit.
Okay.
Yeah, for our financial statements.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, our end of the year, so we have audit expenses at the region, because we're like a small town.
Yep.
Like, we're our own municipality, so we have to pay for all that ourselves. So, we have audit expense, we have our, actually, our annual update of our OPEB trust fund. So, those kind of audit compliance-type expenses is what I refer to in the overhead.
Okay.
We are, you know, we've been talking at school committee meetings about doing a curriculum audit. That's not a cost thing. That's like Danny meeting with the social studies teachers and saying, okay, we're, let's remind ourselves, like, what do we teach? Like, you know, it's like a timeline, like, do we hit all the things we need to hit, whatever, like that kind of thing, so that we have a better handle on making sure that we are meeting what the frameworks are saying, making sure that we are teaching what kids need to know, and, you know. It, it doesn't happen as much anymore, but I think back in my early days of teaching, when like, there was a lovely woman I taught with in, in the third grade, if you had her for a teacher, you learned about penguins, like, you learned about penguins through September until June, and like, you left with a lot of knowledge about penguins, and I don't know what else we're supposed to learn in the third grade. And so, just audits are trying to make sure that even though we know, we want teachers to teach their passion, that they're also making sure that they're teaching the things that we, we need them to teach as well. Okay. Other questions?
Can I add a comment?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just something that Alexander said made me think. The money that we spend for the Grit and the Bridge program, especially people who might be relatively new to the district. So, before we had those programs in place, if we couldn't support a student through those programs, they often went into an out-of-district placement. So, the towns would still pay for that student's needs, as we should. But those, those costs were much more expensive often than what we pay now with these programs. And we believe, if it does fully support the student, that it's better to have them here with their friends in their hometowns. So, we've, I don't have the numbers, but we've actually saved a lot of money by creating those two programs and being able to keep a lot of kids here in district in very individualized programs through Grit and Bridge, rather than sending, sending them out of district.
And that way, they don't have to be on the bus at 6:00 a.m. and getting home at 7:00 P.M., whereas we used to transport them out.
Yeah.
And, I mean, you know, not, not that everything that we do is budget-driven, but specialized schools that, that teach kids with that level of need, it can be up to six-figure salary, six-figure tuition payments. They involve long bus rides. Sometimes there isn't a space in the school. It's not the ideal way that we want to support a student who might be going through a hard time. And being able to do that in-house has been, you know, the kids will say, has really been a huge saver of their, you know, educational lives, their, you know, sanity, all the things, and for families too. Because, you know, finding out that, you know, you've got a, a child who, you know, had an operation and now they're so far behind, they can't come back to school without going to, like, it, it just becomes such a mess.
All of those human factors, and it's financially-
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't mean to present that as a budget.
Yeah.
I mean, the lead is with, can we support that student with what they really, really need? If we can, then great, they stay. And if we can't, then we help find where they, where they need to go to be really supported.
Yep, yep. Yep. All right, other questions? Thank you. Thank you for all of your interest and for your thoughtful questions. They help us to think about what our priorities are. Do other folks in the school committee have comments or responses?
I actually have a quick, and I have one other thing too, because you'll do this for the elementary schools too, right?
Yes.
So, this, because anybody who has elementary school children, yours eventually will get to this level, but if you have elementary-specific questions, that's not part of our-
You, you can join us on Thursday night for Dover's and next Tuesday night for Sherburne's.
That's the thing, like, we do, like, for instance, the, the budget with regards to their benefits is encompassed with us, because we-
Yeah. For, yes, for the region, because you're, you're own, we're our own municipality. When you get to the two locals, we don't talk about benefits, but we'll talk about all the out-of-district students, because our towns are the ones who cover residents 3 to 22 who do get placed out. So, if any money that we spend here at the region hopefully is saving money at the town level when you look at the out-of-district budget. And we look at those two separate budgets when we do the presentation. Thursday night, like I said, for Chicaring, and Tuesday night, next Tuesday, for Sherburne.
I, I think that's one of the reasons why I appreciate so much the efforts that have been made between the sending, you know, the local towns and the region. Because, for example, creating those programs costs the region more money, right? Like, it brings our budget up, but it benefits the local towns, because when students stay here who might otherwise have left to go to a different district, that bill, even though the child might be a 10th grader, is shifted to the local town. So, that's where their, you know, their costs go up and there's nothing that, you know, it's out of everybody's control. Our, our obligation and our desire is to need to meet the needs of the child. But by supporting those programs, there is a trickle-down effect that is real and not like fake trickle-down that benefits, you know, the local town.
So, I do have the factor actually right here that'll come up later, is in the last four years, we've, we've taken out-of-district students, which used to be 12.2% of our students here at the region, or actually, K to 12, right? K to 12, down to 9.7. So, we brought some students back, and other students who would have otherwise, who were here, been evaluated and in former times been sent out because we didn't have the programming, have been able to stay. So, we're, we're seeing the shift.
So, Dawn, I did have one other question. This is a logistical about those air handlers, because you know that was the, that was their sticky point on the Sherburne, on the, on the Sherburne side when we came budgeting. So, I know we're doing, we're trying to get to the all-electric.
Yes.
Is there, because I know with the all-electric then, if there is a power outage, is there a failover for those? I know, I know we have, um, a gen, we have a, we have a failover generator.
A generator for, you know, not to run the whole school, but to keep up, right? So, the, the air handlers, really, the main part is the air conditioning.
Okay.
And then the backup heat.
Okay.
Right, so that, and the air exchange, but if you have a power outage, there's not going to be anyone here you're going to have to worry about necessarily air exchange, but-
I was just, because I was just making sure we wouldn't have another budget cost if we needed to fail. You know, I could just see us going down this rapid hole of oil no more.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think-
Because with, with what Sherburne went up, and I know it's not that much, but when you see that, $700,000 at first, you're like,
Yeah.
deep breaths.
Yes.
But then it's only $40,000, because when you explained it that way, I was like, oh, that's-
Yeah, yeah, because they already had $600,000.
Yeah, I know, I know. And that's the thing that, you know, I think we have to walk, you know, make sure that we put out there that it's really not.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I'm thinking about power outages.
I know.
We have failsafes if the power goes out and it's cold, so that the building doesn't freeze, right?
Right.
But if the power goes out, even if it's warm, we really can't keep school in session because we have pumps that run our water, right? So, if the power goes out, we can't flush toilets.
Well, no, not here, we're not. Here, we have Medfield, we have, you have, you have Medfield Water.
Oh, that's so nice. Thank you, Medfield.
Uh, Chicaring. Yeah, Chicaring does run, yeah, so we, yeah.
Chicaring has to go home.
Yeah, Chicaring has to go home.
We can't ask them to hold it.
Nope.
They're little.
They do, they do lose that.
But we really don't want to use them.
Nobody wants that. That's well water, and you need your pump to get the water in, the elementals.
I didn't, I'm saying, this is like I'm learning something new today. Thank you, Medfield.
Medfield Water, and that's why you have gas, because we have the Medfield gas lines.
Which is nice, important for them to tell us when they're going to flush their water.
Oh, because we get brown water?
Because we get left off the 911 call when they do that, yeah.
That's gross.
Yeah, that recently happened, yes.
When all of a sudden there's brown water coming out of the fountains and the kids are like, wah!
Texting their parents.
That's it. Yeah, I can imagine. All right, I'm sorry, we digress. Thank you, Medfield, for sharing your water and gas with us, although I'm sure we pay them for it.
Yeah, no, we send their gas lines, but we pay for our own gas. Oh, yeah, no, we pay for water.
Great. All right, any further questions? Yes?
Yes, sorry, Dawn, you mentioned this, so, sorry, just for my clarification. The bleacher and press box project, some of that will end up under this budget, but will some potentially carry forward or?
So, we're looking, you know, to, we want to make sure it happens, right? So, we'll be looking for outside support. But if we need to have some seed money to get the project going, that's where, you know, I think that I put, I could put some in from our own budget. So, I'm, I'm holding, I don't, and it may not be any, but we need, I wanted to hold up that opportunity and not have to have multiple votes. And so, I did just, you had a firm out, who we had high hopes for. They just let us know that they're sort of swamped right now, but have given us a designer, a design firm to go look at and then has given, doesn't, they can be able to do the whole project and order everything for us. So, that, a place that, I learned about that today, placed a phone call today. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll get true movement. And he did let me know, though, that the bleachers, it's not a long lead time, so that shouldn't be a problem.
And does that include the press box, or is that kind of a separate?
No, we're trying to do it as one project.
Okay, great.
Yep, and I think the thing that's making me feel like we can move forward, you know, we'll have to see how much it's going to be, but is that there's a lot of leasing opportunities for that. So, if we can spread the cost over multiple years, we can get buy-in, maybe get some additional down payment, and then just sort of be able to pay for it on time, over time. So, that's what we're sort of thinking could be our way to sort of get this going quicker and not have to have a period of time where we're fundraising.
Thank you.
All right. Last comments, questions, going once, going twice. All right. Wonderful. I would like to invite a motion to adopt a fiscal year 24 budget in the amount of $27,972,540, which is reduced by estimated receipts and available funds in the amount of $3,808,004, for a net amount to be assessed to the member towns of $24,164,536, comprised of $23,375,136 in operating expenses and $789,400,000. No, I'm going to say that one again, $789,400 in debt expenses, and that the treasurer be authorized to certify this budget in the apportioned share of each town based on the statutory method. Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Collins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark Healy. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Ms. Miller is unable to be with us this evening. She's ill. I have, need to ask for a motion to approve the utilization of $160,000 of June 30, 2022, certified excess and deficiency funds for the fiscal 24 budget. Motion made by Angie Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Lynn Collins. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay. With tonight's approval, the committee's work, our school committee's work is completed and the next steps will happen at the town level. Dover's warrant hearing is scheduled for March 13th. That is next Monday at 7:30 P M. That I believe will be in the Great Hall in Dover. An abbreviated budget presentation similar to this will be shared for both the operating budget and the capital requests. In addition, we will be presenting the capital request and related I M A intermunicipal agreement to the Dover Selectmen on March 16th. That is Thursday evening. Dover's annual town meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 1st, and the town election will be May 15th. The capital request will be part of a ballot question on that day. For Sherburne, Sherburne's advisory public hearing on the warrant is scheduled for Saturday, March 18th at 8:30. Is that accurate? Okay. Where do you hold that?
Zoom.
Oh, so nice. Thank you. On Zoom, you can watch it in your jammies. The advisory committee covers all the budgets, so we have no formal presentation except for our capital request. We'll be presenting the capital request and the related I M A to the Sherburne Select Board on March 14th, Friday? Wow.
No, 14th is a Tuesday.
14th is a Tuesday. Oh, 13th is a Monday. Okay, on Tuesday, March 14th.
I'm scared.
So sorry. The Sherburne's annual town meeting will be scheduled for April 25th and their town election is held on May 9th. The capital request will also be a ballot question in Sherburne. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Budget hearing and discussion is closed. We'd like to hear from the superintendent for a superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you. So this will be a joint presentation by Mr. Compton and myself. So to start with just a few school highlights on the next slide.
Oops, sorry.
Thank you.
Multitasking.
Let's take care for a little bit, so you're welcome to multitask now. I'd just like to thank Mr. Smith from the high school and Mr. Lawrence from the middle school for presenting or providing you with their reports. I have a couple of updates. One is homework free Fridays has gone forward thanks to a vote from the middle school faculty. So the first Friday of every month will mark a homework free weekend for our middle school students, thanks to their advocacy and their collaboration with teachers. It was great to have a joint group of students and teachers sit down and share their ideas, their concerns, and come up with a proposal that met everybody's needs and gave teachers some flexibility in, in the long run. So fantastic to that. Congratulations to Sonali Koo and Ashgay Venkataran for winning the spelling bee and moving on to the regional competition. And our geography B winners, Dorian Deben, a seventh grader in first place, and David Craig in second place. So lots of great things happening at the middle school. In the high school, you read about the science Olympiad club. We have 15 students heading to the state competition at Wentworth, which is fantastic. Our mock trial for the first time ever made the elite eight in, in Massachusetts. You saw photos of our AP physics students volunteering at the Museum of Science with Dr. Bridger, which is super exciting. We had several scholastic art awards given to our students, including Skylar Hackett, Mia Lysick Ellis, and Lauren Gong. And in terms of athletics, as usual, we have some superstars. Our boys and girls basketball team both won the TBL small division and the girls team is headed on to the MIAA tournament. Luke Rinaldi was the 10th Dover Sherburne student ever to, to make 1,000 points in basketball. So congratulations to Luke. The boys Alpine ski team won our Mass Bay East League and went on to states. And then girls hockey just recently played in the MIAA tournament. So congratulations to all of our athletes and we're about ready to turn into spring sports, believe it or not. And make sure you please buy your tickets to the Music Man, our high school musical, which will be coming up next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So super exciting there. In terms of legislative breakfast, it's the first time in a few years where we've had the legislative breakfast between superintendent, superintendents and our state representatives in person. So I was in Newton, at Newton Town Hall with former interim superintendent Kathy Smith. And that was a fantastic event. There was 44 superintendents from the Tri Valley region, as well as many state reps, including our own Denise Garlick and David Linsky and Mike Rush and Becca Roche were present in the audience. There was a little bit of time to mingle and converse about what's great happening in our schools, but also talk about, you know, our priorities as superintendents and as educators in terms of meeting the needs of their kids. So there was a few things that we brought up for them to consider and kind of understand the full context of how it plays out for kids on a day-to-day basis. There is certainly concern in small districts and in large districts over the 14% increase in tuition costs for students who go out of district to private placements. And, and, you know, luckily we've been able to maneuver around that and with Dawn's careful planning, be able to swallow that.
Those are special education placements, not just regular.
Right, special education placements. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, private schools.
Yes, but they're special education schools.
Yes.
And so many of our districts are looking for a pothole fund or a way to kind of soften the blow next year and then be able to absorb the full cost the following year because traditionally it'd been a 2% increase, 14% kind of came out of nowhere.
And we have no control over those fees.
No, no.
Do we know what, sorry, why that jumped so high?
Sure. So it's, it's just really, the 2% increase in their tuition for years and years and years did not allow them to stay competitive in terms of paying their, their staff. And so those, those private schools for special education were in jeopardy of being shut down because they couldn't, they couldn't put teachers in the classroom and all of the specialized support personnel that you need, but those populations of kids. So it's in order for them to maintain, you know, a staff and be able to open their doors to our kids, which we really need because unfortunately there's just some kiddos that we can't meet their needs in district. So it's, it's necessary, but it's just a lot at once.
Yeah. And you're not really seeing it, remember, because we talked about the two locals, we've been talking more about this.
No, I know, I just, when you said from two to 14. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, 5%, 5%, 4% would have been nice, but it's just the way that happened. So we talk a lot about circuit breaker and eventually we'll probably do a quiz. I think we should do a quiz before you're allowed to jump off of, of school committee. Every three years, that's a quiz, that how much you've learned. You have MTS S down to a science. This is fantastic. But circuit breaker, as you know, currently when a student's expense for going, for special education reaches four times the base amount, which last year would have been $49,494. So any student's expense beyond that, you can then reply, apply for reimbursement at 75% of that cost. And so the superintendents are advocating that not only do we reduce the threshold so that more students meet it sooner, but then the reimbursement also goes from 75% to 95% or 90% to be able to help with the expenses of our kiddos who we just can't meet their needs here in district. And lastly, they're asking for the state to develop a special education commission to kind of look at special education holistically as opposed to through just collaboratives and at the district level to kind of say, you know, how are we going to meet the growing needs of our, our students? How are we going to develop a workforce of specialized educators who can meet their needs? Because certainly, you know, we, the field of education is, is not growing at this point and there are some specialized talents that we need in that force. So wonderful breakfast. It was great to get out of the district and interact with some other superintendents and to see Kathy in her new location. So as we've mentioned, audits, we just finished our special education program review with Dorsey Yearley and Deb Levine, both retired special educators who had done our audit in 2018 and 19. And we just finished our tier focus monitoring review with the state, which happens on a regular basis to make sure that we're adhering to mandates that they provide from the state level.
And that's the state coming in and basically doing an audit, right?
Yes.
We use this word audit, like.
Right. So we, we had requested the special education program review from these outside auditors, Deb Levine and Dorsey Yearley, to help us make sure that we're maximizing the staff that we have and the programming that we have and to make improvements for the sake of our kids, whereas the, the state monitoring happens whether we like it or not, it's just on a cyclical basis. And sometimes they look at civil rights. They also look at our English language learners program. So every year there's kind of something. But I just wanted to share some commendations and some recommendations that we have around special education moving forward, because there's a lot to be proud of. Commendations to staff and family feedback, had so many positive opinions regarding the skillfulness and the commitment of our staff, which we hear from time to time, time and over again. That's certainly something that Denny and I have heard through our entry processes, really the dedication of all of our educators. I mentioned that we've been able to bring students back from out of district placements and maintain students who otherwise would have gone out of districts thanks to our new programming. We're feeling that our, our programs are well resourced. Most of our parents are satisfied with the programming and feel that their students are engaged in the I E, I E P process as they reach that age of 14 and can be seated at the table for the conversations. Eligibility process, we've really become more consistent in deciding who becomes eligible and what services they should, they should get, which is certainly important. And that the MTS S system at the elementary level is impacting what they're seeing in their evaluation. So if fewer students who are being evaluated for special education students for services and when they are evaluated, they're actually eligible because the others we had supported along the way in tier one, tier two, tier three. And, and so it's, it's saving us because we have fewer kids who need special education services. It's saving us time because there are fewer that we need to evaluate and more that we can just give that day-to-day support to, who don't need that two-year wait time to get in line for services. Recommendations, luckily cost neutral. What we're seeing is right now at the elementary level, we have one special education coordinator and one team chair. At the secondary level across the middle and high school, we have one secondary coordinator and two team chairs. And coming out of all of the focus groups, interviews and surveys, the recommendation is to have four coordinators who absorb the team chair positions so that the people who are facilitating the team meetings have an administrative lens and have the ability to facilitate conversation between special educators who might have differing opinions about what a child needs. And it would also, you know, shore up the opportunity for more support in terms of programming and supporting the programs, which we know the number and that the variety are expanding within the building, and help the principals and assistant principals with the evaluation process of all the special education staff. So what that will look like now is we will have a special education coordinator pre K through two across Pine Hill and Chicaring, which will help with consistency across the two elementary schools. A coordinator three through five across the two elementary schools. One housed here in the middle school who will work closely with David and Tracy and another housed in the high school that will work closely with John and Ann as kind of a threesome team to bring together special ed and gen ed conversations and really kind of look at kids holistically. So that's our plan. Looking at the goals program at the elementary school and really defining what that means for our students with autism and then what does that, how do we continue to support them as they move up to the middle and high school? Continuing to support gen ed and special ed collaboration and making sure that we have dynamic systems within the classroom of both teachers working together. Looking at our educational assistance support and making sure that we are utilizing those, those resources to their, their best. And then thinking about our related service providers. So our OTs, our, our PTs, our behavioral therapists and making sure that they have adequate case loads that aren't too large, that aren't too small across our schools. So that's it from our audit, our review side. From the state side, glowing reviews. In fact, we got lovely emails saying, amazing work to the Dover Sherburne team, no findings. And that speaks to, of course, the, the hard work of our special education team. So that's fantastic.
I want to say a huge thank you, obviously, to all of you, to the special education team and also to, to Kate McCarthy, because I know that hosting those visiting teams, organizing their day, making sure that they, you know, have what they need and then obviously being on the, being the sort of the point person for the feedback. And, you know, I, I think she's been able to make a big difference in her time here. So thank you, Kate, for watching.
Thank you.
Do you guys have questions or comments about the portions of that report?
Can you finish the last few bullets and then go back to Denny?
So sorry.
No, that's okay. I'll try to move quickly. So human resources, as you know, we had the central office audit last year to look at our supports. We were given the report. Dr. Tom Campbell, retired human resource director from Needham, has been working with us. He was all ready to get us a report by March 1st, knowing that the budget needed to roll out. Unfortunately, something happened in his personal life, which has set him back a little bit, but he is trying to get back on the, the treadmill and work with us to get us a final report. But luckily Dawn has, has set money aside, so when he has a proposal of what this person's job description will look like, what kind of layer of administrative priority they'll have, we'll be able to move forward with that. So that's great news. In terms of the DEI webinar, so last Tuesday evening, we had the third of four community forums. The first one was mostly Dr. Hoyt kind of presenting the idea of DEI and what that means for a district. The second one was more of a town hall where Dr. Hoyt read the room and saw that there was a lot of questions that wanted, needed to be addressed and it was probably best done that in a public forum instead of, you know, asking in small groups and then kind of all coming up with the same question at the end that could have been answered altogether. And then our third one, we shifted towards a webinar format because we felt that there was a lot of misinformation and a lot of questions and wonder out there. And it was really an opportunity for Carlos, Denny and myself to get the information about, out about what is DEI? What does that look like in the classroom for kids, for teachers? What is the research behind it? What is the data beyond the NYU report that supports it in terms of our own students here in the district? And what does that mean for dollar signs? So while I would never encourage, you know, 90 minutes of lecturing, it was really an opportunity for us to capture the soundbite of all that information. It's been sent out on Nextdoor, I know, for our community members to be able to get the same information. And so that's, that's available, you know, in multiple different formats. There was some time for questions at the end. I wish there had been more for the questions that we weren't able to answer. We took them out of the chat as well as out of our feedback form and created a document that included questions just from that. And then those got folded into our bigger document as well. So that's out there as well. So that was kind of the rationale of, of why it was a webinar format with, one, to provide the information and two, to be able to capture it on video for anybody who couldn't see it. It's now available at any time.
That's also on the website, I'm assuming?
It's on the website, yeah. I haven't checked the website recently, but there was supposed to be kind of a big, like, you can't miss it when you go on the website, although I was just on it. I'll double check tomorrow. Make sure that that happens.
It's hard to do all this at the same time that you're trying to launch a new website, which I know is one of our topics tonight.
But I just wanted to provide some feedback. So we did have the exit ticket. There was 135 people there at the height of the webinar, and I know you can go on YouTube and see that many people have watched it since. But a few pieces of feedback, this is very thoughtfully prepared, you are transparent, clear, and engaging. I know there are a lot of information, but I get the gist. I don't understand why some parents have an issue with cooperation and inclusion. Thank you for doing this tonight. I think it was a great discussion. I would prefer if there could be more FaceTime with the speaker versus a slideshow the entire time. Good feedback. I loved the video from Challenge Success. I would have thought there would have been a live chat with this event, but do like the Q and A was taken at the end. Thank you again. So again, some constructive feedback, but again, with the time we had, we tried to make the most of the format. I would like to see a more inclusive and open dialogue. We are spoken to, but and not allowed to speak. We need a forum where we can have an open and productive conversation. The current setup of writing a question down, then potentially getting an answer with no option to follow up to the question responses, once again, giving the perception of secrecy and hiding behind Zoom. This isn't meant as an attack, but a request to be more inclusive. So again, we had open dialogue at the first two forums. We're going to have open dialogue at the next one. This was really an opportunity to get the information out there, so we had substance to talk about and examples, concrete information to talk about. And we tried to answer all of the questions that came in. We did, through chat or through the feedback form. So the strategy that we thought would work in the moment. And lastly, I'm so proud to have you all as leaders in our district. I stand behind this work 110%, and so appreciate all the care and effort you put into the work every day. I have a kid at each level in this district, and 2/3 of my kids represent diversity in various ways, and the actions on the ground show that a majority of our staff and students care about equity and inclusion and work to create a sense of belonging. This work really matters in my family, in our schools, in our community. Thank you. So you see the range of feedback, constructive and positive.
I was able to attend, and I appreciated it. I feel like I, you know, we've had some calls from community comments. We've had, you know, I've had folks write to me and ask for things. You know, I'd like things in writing. I'd like, you know, and it's hard because there's that balance between wanting conversational conversation and also wanting to be accountable to say, you know, I'll go on the record with the things I say, and sometimes that's tricky. So I appreciate that you're trying to hit it from every, I appreciate you're trying to hit it from every angle. So thank you, guys. It was a long night, and I know we could have probably gone until 10 o'clock with questions. Other comments, observations?
I agree with what you said. Thank you. I've been to actually all three of the community events so far and found that because the format and structure has varied a bit, it's actually brought forth new angles on the conversation as well, which has been great. And I wonder, do we have a date yet for the fourth night?
March 30th.
March 30th.
At Sherburne Community Center, 6:30, and it's going to be a focus on curriculum.
Great, thanks.
I'm sure Denny will touch on. We're trying to hit the topics that seem kind of most relevant coming out of, so there's a lot of questions around curriculum. So we think that's kind of the big nugget. I think after that, once we do some training with restorative practices with our faculty, that'll be the next discussion that we have for parents, is what is restorative justice?
What's that exactly look like?
Exactly, yeah, right. And how do we continue to keep our kids safe and, you know, let them learn in the process of making mistakes?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And lastly, the calendar task force has not been forgotten. We have materials from other towns, including a survey, a timeline. We just talked about it today at central office, realizing that it's not just about looking at holidays in the calendar, but it's a larger conversation around, you know, do we go to two weeks in March for our vacation? Do we start after Labor Day? You know, those kinds of questions. And so while the towns that we've looked at have done this in a truncated timeline, kind of like an August to December, ready for a January vote on the calendar, we realized we do need the longer runway. So tomorrow at our leadership team meeting, we're going to be crafting our own timeline, and we'll be back in touch with people within a week to get volunteers for that.
Great. I know I have, Mrs. Miller has asked, Ms. Miller has asked a few times if she could represent us. If there's anybody else who would like to join her, let me know. Otherwise, definitely contact Judy.
You, sign her up. Thank you.
Her bailiwick. She's very interested. And we're all very interested. Don't get me wrong, but she would really like to take this one.
Great. And then Mr. Conklin.
All right, so just one pause. Any other last comments or questions on that portion?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to take a minute and also thank Mr. Smith, Mr. Lawrence, for putting together those memos. I really enjoyed seeing the kids at hard at work. I think one of the pieces of feedback that we've heard is like, everything is like all about the kumbaya and like, what are they doing in school? And I really loved seeing the groups, specifically highlighted the groups that are doing those different clubs and that are doing outreach. You know, I think about kids, my kids, when they went through and how some of those organizations were like the most impactful for them. I think we're going to do a consent agenda on the Tufts. I mean, those experiences are huge for kids and being able to participate in academic teams and having those teams be wildly successful is really cool. So thank you, and thank you to all the different advisors and folks who run those.
Yeah.
All right.
So my brief little update. So when it rains, it pours, and we had other tiered focus monitoring going on this year. So we had our English learners program that Dusty came in and did the same, similar special ed interviews, looked at documents, and they also had really great reviews for the district. We're considered a low incidence district, and piece of feedback I got is that from the Office of Language Acquisition that they would send other people in the state here to observe our programs, which is a really nice piece of feedback, and a lot of credit needs to go to Chris Luskow, our L coordinator, Akita Kapoor, who's working with our middle school and our high school L students right now, as well as just our teachers who are figuring out ways to incorporate students into their classroom and to come up with some really genius strategies after working with our English learners. The really only finding that came out of that, and we're still waiting for the final draft of the report, is we just had one teacher that didn't have their sheltered English immersion certification. So out of all the things, like, that's a pretty easy fix. So we're on that already. And then I just submitted the federal grants, our Title I, Title II, and Title IV grant, tiered focus monitoring. So that's just submitting, did a lot of paperwork and a lot of documents to the state showing that ways that we're using our federal grant funding and making sure that we are going through all the proper avenues and channels in our usage or publication of that information. So that is pending. The more exciting thing is the upcoming learning walks. So now that I'm back into the swing of things after my parental leave, I'm doing learning walks with all of the high school department heads. So we're going through, visiting different classrooms, their departments, and then having conversations about that. The main point of this is just calibration. I'm new to the district, they're new to me, and making sure the things that they are looking for when they're evaluating teachers and thinking about best practices and great tier one instruction, are those the same things that are in line with the mass teacher rubric? Are they the same things that are aligned with kind of the things that I'm bringing into teaching and learning? So I'm very, very excited about those. I'm also doing them with all of the assistant principals. Beth does them with the principals. So I've taken the assistant principals. So I did the one at the high school the other day. It was fantastic, but really leading to some great conversations. And again, we started this fall thinking about best practices, and these are allowing us to come full circle back to those conversations about what does engaging, student-centered instruction look like throughout all of our classrooms. One thing I did put up here as well, which I guess is pretty important, is we also, in two weeks, have our Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education Job Fair that we'll be attending and representing. So we have some anticipated openings for next year. This is a great organization that we're part of and are hope to really find some great diverse candidates and our commitment as a district to find diverse candidates. We've also been looking at some other places to reach out to our diverse candidates, UMS Boston Job Fairs, just kind of looking for some other places that we might not necessarily have looked at in the past. And the last part is our new website, which is underway. So Anthony Oratko, our Director of Technology, and Allison Gullings-Rude, Pine Hill Assistant Principal, have been spearheading this, and then all of the assistant principals and myself have been working on this. So I'm excited because we can give you a preview tonight of the new homepage, the district homepage.
It's split into two slides.
It's split into three slides, I think.
Three, okay. Just, I didn't want to unveil it too early.
So as you're seeing this, this is going to be the new main district page, and you'll scroll down.
To make so many people so happy.
From top to bottom.
People do not like our website.
I was trying to use the old one the other day, and I about lost my mind.
So here you can see the new headers that we're going to have, the images. It's going to look really clean, really fresh. I love this part here at the front where we'll be able, in this tab, to have different news stories. We'll be able to have our calendar events on one tab. And I love this because it takes all the social media feeds from the middle school to high school, the elementary schools, the arts department, athletics, and puts them all in one place. So now sometimes, even if you're not on Twitter, like, if you don't have a Twitter account, you'll still be able to go to our district website, and you'll be able to scroll through all of those without having to actually join Twitter if you don't want to tweet. So that's the first part. If you continue to scroll down on the website, there's this middle section here where we give it some facts and statistics and kind of some things at a glance. This, too, has actually been changing and evolving, so we've been looking at, letting people know where we are, that we're roughly 20 miles outside of Boston. I've been doing some research this week, and we have right now 26 different languages spoken at home in the district, and that number actually keeps going up as I'm getting more information. Our student-to-teacher ratio, our average class size. It'll also have links to workshops of graduate in our mission statement. Then you can see the footer there at the bottom. So in those two slides, you can see that that will be one full scroll down. If you go back, Dawn.
Go back up.
That top piece up there, which is going to have access to all of the schools and all of the main departments, that will be static. So that will stay there as you scroll down, and the content will fall underneath that. So in terms of the timeline for the new website, so currently, we have a big task of importing content from the old site to the new site, and there are literally thousands of pages to move over to the new site, some of which we are not going to be bringing over because they're outdated. We're designing new pages right now. In March and April, our IT team is going to be training our admin assistants and other people throughout the district that need to have editing access to the various school websites. So what we just saw is a district website, but each school will have their own website that will look similar to the main district page. May through June, final site, the company that we're using for the website is going to fix any little bugs that we see and fine-tune things, quote-unquote, under the hood. Then we're hoping that by July to do a soft launch of the new website, meaning that it'll just be there, but we're not going to make a huge deal out of it, and we'll be able to troubleshoot as people are finding broken links or finding documents not working with the start to the new school year in August, when we'll formally officially launch the brand-new website. So I think it's really exciting. Angie's been working on this as well as the school committee representative, so we're very, very excited about it. And as somebody who was looking at our old website last year when I was applying for jobs, one of our greatest recruitment tools is a school website, a district website. So I think this is going to help us with recruitment as well.
I can't thank Denny and Angie and the assistant principals and Anthony enough. They have taken this on. Some larger districts have entire IT departments, and this would be their thing. We have our instructional people doing this, and you'll look at Denny's calendar, and you'll see a chunk of like three hours on an afternoon, an evening, a weekend called Website Fun, and that's all of them working together, like literally transferring over pages and creating new pages.
I was going to say that Anthony, of course, and Allison and Denny have been crucial at like figuring out what goes where and like where our big holes are, because there were a lot of big holes that there was no information. Because like I said last week, I was trying to go through something on the website, and I was like, oh, I think I've lost my mind right now. It was so bad for me because I couldn't find the information.
That's hard because we're trying to.
Yeah, we don't have to do anything into it now.
We've kind of stopped trying.
We're done.
You work hard enough, though, you can probably find the bus routes from 2010.
But you know, I mean, it's hard because I think even, like, what have we used this website for like 10 years, maybe?
At least.
A little bit.
I think longer.
And I think you, you know, create something, or you have a company create something for you, and then technology and the way that information is presented changes so rapidly, and you don't, I mean, we don't have a whole department. If we're a huge district, we have people who, this is all they do all day long, but to the budget point of it, it's not us. We have, you know, lots of people doing this for their extra part of their job.
Well, as Denny said, you know, it's like a recruiting tool. I oftentimes think of families who may be moving into our district, and this is kind of their first, because I know it was for me, your first scholarship. What is it about? What does it look, what is it comprised of? So I really appreciate you going through and putting like some of those statistical facts, you know, how far outside of Boston, all those different things that make us who we are, and I like that. So that's great.
We use the communication survey that I believe we had last year to figure out what people actually want to go to the website to use. Things like lunch menus will have their own icons, like the things that people really need to get to on a more frequent basis will be there. And we're actually going to have its own page for kind of new families in the district because that was some of the feedback we got, is that if you move to this district, there's not a lot of information of like the ins and outs. It's really all that information.
Translations, accessibility, all of that.
Is that an easy way to translate it for our families?
It'll all be translated. Another great thing about this is that there's the website, like the desktop site, and there will be a specific mobile site as well, so all of this is going to look good on a phone.
Yeah, because now on your phone.
No, it doesn't look good. And sometimes you get.
Things overlap.
And sometimes on your desktop, you get the laptop version or your phone version. You're like, this is awful. But also, we had a dad, a community member, do photos. He is a professional photographer for us, and he came out and did photos with kids in the classrooms, and it's just so phenomenal. So the photos you've been seeing through our more recent slide decks are all stolen from that rail, so you'll see them on the new website.
I've got a new headshot.
Wait till you see how good your administrative team looks.
Soft focus filter. Yeah, thank you so much. We really, really appreciate the energy and the dynamic, you know, Website Fun because it's important. I mean, we're making, but it's a huge, big deal. It's been a sort of a sticking point for us, you know, communication in general, but particularly people who are trying to go find things on the website, it's not been ideal. And it's, as you know, like, it's just a hard thing to fix because it seems like it should be easy, and it's really layers of complicated. So appreciate the investment of time.
We were embarking on, we certainly hadn't gotten this far, but embarking on this with Dr. Kio, and then the pandemic hit, and he said, this is on the back burner, which made sense. We hadn't gotten this far, but we, you know, we were still trying to.
You did have a phenomenal interim website, though.
I was going to say.
For the pandemic. Let's not forget the interim website.
No, I do want to say that the feedback that I got in the pandemic was, I don't, you know, parents, I don't understand why whoever is making that interim website doesn't just be in charge of the whole website. I was like, well, that's Mrs. McCoy, and she's really busy trying to redesign all education for the pandemic, so I don't think she has any more hours. Thank you for making a beautiful website for that, too.
I just had to remind people that there was.
You need a side hustle. You could just do that also, maybe.
But then I saw the hope in Denny's eyes that he could take over this project.
Right. I'm sorry you haven't really had any snow to call a snow day, but you've got a website. All right. Anything else on these updates? Great.
How is it going to be maintained moving forward?
Good question.
To your point, like, you know, the fact, I mean, one of the big issues was you go on the website and get outdated information. Like, how are we going to make sure that doesn't?
Denny has a flow chart of who's in charge of what.
Yes, we're going to assign people to specific items, and as we're building it, we're being mindful of what can be linked to like a live Google Doc so that we don't have to go and change the whole page, but the document is being continuously updated. So we make the edits in the Google Doc, and then it will change automatically so that we hopefully don't run into issues of it feeling outdated quickly.
And we got lax in that they trained all the admin assist, but never really kept that up, so a changeover. And so there, if you used it right on the old website, you could put on deleted after, like, it would archive it. And if you didn't know to do that, it stays there forever. So part of it was just not the oversight to the staff who are supposed to maintain it, I think, lost, we've lost sight of that.
Lost, that happens. Because we run lean.
We do.
Right. Pros and cons. That's a good question, though. All right. Any other comments, questions from the one? All right, back to Dawn. We're going to have the monthly financial report.
So the WART report you have, which is easy, right? So you have it in your packet. And we've talked a lot about what's already in the financial report, but again, remember the report highlights in bold the new information, so you'll see that we did increase the anticipated positive variance in interest income up to $80,000. So just to recap, so if you look at your revenue statement and you see the $80,000 in Chapter 71 and the $84,000 in bank interest, that's the $160,000 that we applied to fiscal year 2024 budget, just so you make that connection. On the salary side, I mean, on the operating expenditure side, you're going to see that we swung into a negative variance in substitutes. We have had a lot of leaves and some interesting situations this year, but know that some of the positive variance up in your teaching, classroom, teaching, special ed, some of that savings is from unpaid leaves, and so it sort of helps offset the negative variance that we have in the substitutes. And that'll continue to fluctuate as the year continues. We won't really know where we stand until hopefully June 16th, barring those snow days. The other highlight is that, and I mentioned this during the budget presentation, that if you look at your retiree insurance, employer insurance for retired, it now has a positive variance of $28,000. I left that for you to see, but next month it'll be gone because I'll encumber it for the OPEB contribution, but I wanted to show you that we did generate, when we sort of did the update as of February, based on who was currently enrolled, updated that variance. So we will increase our funding from the 175 we've been talking about up to the 200, and that's really coming from that final 5% that we got from January to June. I think those are the only highlights on the financials. Happy to answer any other questions, but I think it's actually helpful to look at the financials in relation to how we just talked about the budget, seeing some of the components. And again, if you have any questions, think of them later, feel free to reach out.
Questions now? Anything? Okay. Okay. Without further ado, we'll move to the next item on our agenda. This is the consent agenda. There is the approval of minutes of February 7th and 15th of 2023. This will include, approving the consent agenda will include our annual vote on the Massachusetts School Choice Law. As you may know, every year, we historically in Dover and Sherburne do not choose to participate in school choice, and that's offering our students, offering folks from out of district the opportunity to come here as tuition-paying students. So by approving the consent agenda, that includes the vote on school choice. And then we're also being asked to approve a high school overnight field trip, and this is the trip to Tufts for, it's kind of like a UN type of experience that students have done for a number of years. Any questions or holds on any of the consent agenda items? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mark, you're excited.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And then lastly, you have communication. You have the detailed reports from John Smith and David Lawrence about the goings-on at the high school and middle school. If you are watching from home, it's worth going into the packet and reading them because there's a ton of really great stuff going on. And then you also have the minutes of the Sherburne School Committee meeting. Before we close, are there any items that folks would like to see? Now, in April, our meetings are sort of spoken for, I think. We're doing in April with the region. Do we meet in the region? No.
Really?
We meet twice with the joint. We meet on April 4th in Boston at the Metco headquarters, visiting with our Boston families, and then also conducting our monthly meeting there, a joint session. We meet on April 25th back here in joint session. We will do our superintendent, sorry, April 25th?
26. We moved it to Wednesday because of town meeting.
Town meeting, that's right. We'll be meeting on April 26th. And those meetings, both of them, in addition to some other items on our agenda, will include superintendent evaluation. Broken down into sort of two parts so that it does not become a long night of just deadly not, I mean, it's always enjoyable.
Very important information.
It's very important to you. It would just seem nice to break it down into smaller bites. It's a little too late. All right. Are there any other items that you would like us to plan for, to include for May? Yes.
So I, along with a group, a group of us have tried to revive SPANDS, which stands for Substance Prevention Awareness Network, which used to be, years ago was very active, and, and then folks running it, their kids graduated, and it kind of went underground. Anyway, in recent meetings, the, the idea has come up that through our health curriculum at the high school, freshmen are taught about drug and alcohol education, but it's quite probable that they will not revisit that again before they graduate. And this is not a knock against our health department. I, I love, I think they do an amazing job, and I, as a high school student, would have loved the model of where you get to, to pick from different.
Modules.
Projects or different curriculum instead of always just general PE. However, there is a concern among the members of SPAN, and it's been brought up with PTO and Positive Now, too, to somehow get this information back to students, maybe early junior year, when they're starting to drive, they're, you know, a little, if they're going to start thinking about that kind of risky behavior, it's maybe a little more in their world than it is hopefully in ninth grade. So just wanted to bring that up. If there's any room for looking at that and.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
No, I know we do do curriculum reviews, but maybe there's a way to sort of talk with, with the health, health folks about if that's, there's some way that we can make sure to get that information to kids, maybe, like just in time.